Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting to order. And City Clerk.
Local?
Yes. Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton?
Here.
Council, Mayor Protem Posey?
Present.
Mayor Del Glaze?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
Councilmember Kalnick?
Here.
All present. And City Clerk Estanislav requested permission to be absent pursuant to Charter of Section 310A. There be no objections. The minutes were reflected her excused. Yes, I have a PowerPoint presentation entitled "Ocean View Estates Submitted by Ursula Luna Reynosa," Director of Community Development. I thought it was on. Sorry. You don't want me to start over, do you? I'm kidding. Okay. And you already did the announcement of supplemental communications. Are there any public comments? Yes, we do have Sheri Engel. Okay. Let's see here. I just want to make sure this is for the closed session. She said study session. Yes, go ahead. Hi, Sheri, come up, please. Or... I was supposed to call her Violet.
Okay. Honorable Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I'm Sheri Engel. I have been a 20-year volunteer at Huntington Central Park. And Mile Square Park in Fountain Valley is owned and operated by OC Parks. They are creating a nature center, botanical garden, amphitheater, walking trails, meadow, and ponds to fulfill their new master plan. These improvements are paid for by OC taxpayers. Huntington Central Park is fortunate to have all of those features and more. Unfortunately, our park does not have a sustainable revenue source for improvements. As I understand it, park improvements are tied to the Quimby Act and development fees. Without continual home building within the city, the park will have to rely on CIPs for improvements. Presently, all city revenue collected from the park's two restaurants, equestrian center, events, filming, sports events, and the disc golf, as well as the mobile home park, go into the general fund. Huntington Central Park supports so many amazing city venues and events. Why can't it receive a portion of that revenue that it helps generate annually? Visit HB gets a portion of the hotel fact tax to sustain itself. An example of present park needs would be to replace the loss of half of its tree canopy. Just look at Google Earth history to see a visual on that. Huntington Central Park is a destination. It is the fourth-best birding site in Southern California. It is one of the top wintering sites in monarch butterfly, for the monarch butterfly, and it was a sanctuary for people to escape to during COVID and still is a respite. Please help Central Park thrive for the next 50 years by ensuring an annual maintenance revenue. And I want to say thank you, Barbara, for eight years of an amazing HCP journey. You were the wind in the sails, park improvement sails. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. That concludes public comments. She makes me cry, that one. Okay, so then we'll go ahead and begin our study session and the Ocean View Estate leases. Ms. Luna Reynosa?
Good afternoon, evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We are going to talk about Ocean View Estates this evening. And our presentation up. So Ocean View Estates Mobile Home Park is owned by the City of Huntington Beach. It's located at 7051 Ellis Avenue, which is the northeast corner of Golden West and Ellis. And you can see from the site map that it includes 44 homes in the mobile home park. So generally, the background is that the city had acquired some mobile home parks as part of redevelopment and needed to relocate those folks. You can see kind of the history over time of that relocation. And they ended up, the city ended up creating this mobile home park here. The property was purchased for park use, but this mobile home park was put in place prior to Measure C. So it was done prior to Measure C. However, if and when this mobile home park is vacated, this is parkland and will need to be improved as parkland and will be subject to Measure C. The, there is, it is of note that one of the remaining tenants is a lifer tenant, meaning that their lease, they are guaranteed to be able to live in their home until they pass. So there is some liability there with the city in terms of if we were to not extend that, the lease agreement there. But in recent research, there's some relocation liability for the city kind of regardless of just even the life estate rental agreement. And in 2017 was the most, the closure was extended to 2024. And that's one of the reasons we're here before you this evening is 2024 is really coming up quickly. And many of the tenants that reside there now are getting nervous about that date and asking about their, their future. Do they need to be looking for a new home, a new place to move their, their mobile home? So again, the current lease terms expire September 30th of 2024. The approximate gross annual revenue for fiscal year 2223 is about $685,000. Less expenditures and factoring in a 5% vacancy, it's about $571,000. The estimated funds needed for relocation costs, and this is pending an actual relocation impact report, but we did reach out to a consultant that prepares these types of reports to get this estimate. So again, this is rough order of magnitude, but $3.4 million is what it will cost the city to relocate these residents should we decide to allow the lease agreements to terminate and revert this back to parkland. The estimated funds needed to remediate the land from the interim mobile home park use and prepare the land for park use is roughly $1.2 million. And the estimated cost to create a passive park, so not really many improvements, but just a passive park, is $4.6 million. I did want to recognize staff who largely helped do a lot of this research, talked to other departments. So Steve Holtz, Charles Kovak, and Kim Radding, who's behind me, part of our housing staff. So these numbers come from chatting with consultants, with other staff members from other departments. And again, they are estimates. So the course of action for cessation of use would include, again, preparing a relocation plan, so hiring a consultant to do that. An impact report would be created as part of that. And they would be meeting with the residents. There would be an analysis of the relocation, the housing availability mitigation measures, resident, meeting with the residents. This report is required to be published for a 60-day review period. There's a public hearing that's required. There's a finding for the cessation of use, which is a six-month notice to vacate, and then relocation assistance as warranted through the report. So it's a fairly lengthy process. So the acquisition and relocation consultant, again, would interview potentially impacted households. They would analyze the local market data for area replacement housing opportunities. They would provide an assessment of relocation and replacement costs to facilitate cessation of use as a mobile home park. And then they would deliver the report. This is 60 days with an estimated cost of $15,000. But one thing of note that this does not include appraisals. So if they had to do appraisals, it would be a lot more expensive. But in their estimation, based on the, how old these mobile homes are, they're saying that buying new mobile homes would be the way to go as opposed to looking at what the value of these current homes are. So that's one option, is to allow the leases to expire and to pursue the process to cease to have the mobile heart, park be there. We wanted the City Council to consider some other options as well, which is to extend the lease agreements beyond the September 2024 date and reserving a portion of the gross annual revenue for closure and relocation costs. So this chart is just for illustrative purposes. There's a lot of different scenarios that the City Council could consider should you desire to go this route. But to help frame the thought process, we'll go over these examples. So one is that you could extend the leases for 10 years and reserve 100% of the revenue, meaning that the general fund would not receive, I mean, it's still general fund money, but you'd kind of put it in a restricted account, which would generate about almost $7 million. And the estimated closure is $6.5 million. So you would have the money to cover the relocation. You could extend the leases for 15 years and only reserve 67% of the revenue. You can see what the, the general fund would receive, close to $4 million then. The park closure reserve fund would get close to 7.8, which is about the estimated cost to close. 20 years at 67%, general fund gets close to $6 million. Park reserve fund is 11.5 million. Estimated cost to close is 9.5, et cetera. At 25 years and only reserving 50%, you can see what the numbers look like there. The City Council could also consider reserving even more to start to cover some of those other improvements to actually improve the park and beyond just covering the relocation costs should, should you desire. So there's a lot of options that could be considered under a scenario where you extend and reserve some of the revenue for paying some of the relocation costs and/or park improvement costs. And with that, we wanted to provide the opportunity to really answer any questions. I will say that there is some, some urgency with this, if there's a desire particularly to close the park in that really we would need to have the relocation consultant onboard in, in December to start that process because it is such a long process in order to give all of the required legal notices, et cetera, prior to the termination of these lease agreements. We would need to kick that off here in December. If there's a desire to extend the leases under any of the kind of alternatives, we have a little bit more time, but the tenants are quite anxious about their future. So having some sort of decision and coming back with that decision in the future would be beneficial.
I'll ask a quick question and we'll go to council. Did you say, and I missed it, how much notice would we have to give the park if we were going to have them leave? Was it six months or?
Well, there was a six-month notice, but it's an 18-month, why? Go ahead.
The initial notice to the, the tenants at the park would be 18 months. So that would be like April of next year, roughly before the 2024 date.
Okay. My last question is, is there anything major right now in the park that needs attention or, you know, needs a large investment of money at this time?
Well, I'm going to let Kim Radding describe that a little bit more. She's been doing a fabulous job of kind of really spending her time going to the park weekly, understanding what the needs are. One thing, though, that has been communicated to me is that the tenants themselves are reluctant to invest in their own properties, not knowing what the future is.
Of course.
But in terms of the things that the city's responsible for, Kim, why don't you provide some information?
We have been looking at probably a CIP that would help with the pavement there. We have a responsibility to maintain the driveways and the roadways. That would be the largest expense, but we've done a good job catching up with the maintenance this last year.
Oh, good.
But I would just reiterate the concern of the homeowners looking forward.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
A couple of questions. If one of these tenants sells or, you know, they, they move out or, or pass away, whatever it is, can, and someone comes into that, that home, do they have the same where we have to relocate them if they, if we close the park? Or can there be a condition where we say, hey, if you come in here, you're not getting relocated?
Yes, it's interesting because we have sort of two kind of sets of laws that we're having to deal with. One is the relocation of the kind of original relocation done by the city, but the other is just mobile home park closure laws. And so it was, it's really under the mobile home park closure that these folks are all eligible for relocation. Otherwise, it was really the lifer who, under our kind of previous relocation. And so we did receive a legal opinion from the city attorney's office kind of relative to the question. So the answer, the short answer is yes, even somebody who comes in within the last year or two.
Gets the relocation.
Gets their eligible.
Correct. And this comes up every, every so often. We've, we've dealt with this. And I have always liked just keeping the park for the fact that it's, you know, it supplies the affordable housing that it's always supplied. I do like the idea of taking some of that money out, not necessarily for a closure fund, but it's public land, it's public park, and we're making revenue on that public park. And if you take a small amount of that on for, that is dedicated to, you know, like Central Park, where you can say, you know, out of this, this mobile home park revenue, we can take a little percent of that that every year gets put, not, not for CIP or anything. It's specifically to take care of the maintenance because that's our biggest cost. It's not building new parks, it's the maintenance. I mean, that would be something, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine extending it however long. I, I don't mind. I don't, it's not a burdensome, it's not a burden. It's a lot of money to fix it or, you know, to turn it back into a park. It's serving a good use. And actually, you breaking this up just gave me the thought that, you know, I haven't had before, that, you know, this is, we're making money off a park, so why can't some of that money go back into the park? And I'd sort of like to see something like that. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kalnick?
Thank you. Did we have this presentation like a couple of months ago or did we, it was scheduled and then we pulled it? Because I feel like I've, this feels a little bit déjà vu.
I think I chatted with you about it.
Okay. All right. I got, I seen this PowerPoint, I think, at some point in the past. Okay.
Well, the PowerPoint's new, so you cannot see that.
PowerPoint's new. So I think, okay. I think the conversation, it's left brain, right brain talking to each other faster. Zooming out a bit. So we still operate this as a fully functional park. People move out, people move in. We don't, we're not, we weren't trying to slowly let people move out, correct? Like, we weren't trying to decrease the number of tenants?
We have not put any effort to try to decrease the number of tenants.
Okay. Okay. With regard to the mobile home conversion ordinance we have in the city, my understanding is state law is now kind of replicated that, so even if we changed our mobile home conversion ordinance and said, to Councilmember Peterson's point, of new people moving in to city-owned parks are exempt from the mobile home conversion ordinance and that, but the state law would basically effectuate the same outcomes where we'd end up having to pay to move them.
Yeah, we haven't done a direct comparison between the state law and our ordinance, but yes, our understanding is that, correct.
The money that you've gotten to park closer fund there, how restricted is that? Would it just be earmarked for it or would we have to, I mean, council action can always do it. It wouldn't be totally locked up that if we get into a real hard situation, like, okay, just kidding, we're not closing the park, I need that $6 million to try to keep the lights on.
Correct. This revenue is general fund revenue.
Okay.
And so it stays that way. So I would say earmarked is the appropriate description.
Okay. So then what we don't see up here, though, is full improve, if we were to say, close the park and not cost us any general fund dollars, so we just take all the profit from it, stick it in an account. So is there a number up there that it's to close the park completely and then improve it back to what we would consider park standards, like a green space park standard?
Well, if we close the park, we don't get any revenue.
Correct. But I'm saying, but if we keep the park open for a number of years and we get to, it's going to cost us X to move everybody and then it's going to cost us Y to revamp the whole park, what, is that number represented in any of these?
I think we provided here that getting the land available for park use is 1.2 million plus 4.6 to create a passive park.
Yeah, I think you would add 4.6 million to that last column in the, in the, in the latter slide.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah.
So we don't have a number here that shows us what it would take to get us to perfect.
So in that first, first year, it'd be 11 million, roughly, instead of 6.4 million.
Okay. So then it would take 20 years at 100, roughly 20 years at 100% cost, siphoning off 100% for that, okay. I guess to sell the park to somebody else would be, would require Measure C vote? Or we could long-term lease it to somebody else to oper, I mean, I don't think the city should be landlords, like, it makes us, it puts us in bad position sometimes when we need to raise rents and we have folks come in and say, you know, you're raising our rents. You know, and it's, you've got a, it becomes political as opposed to a business case. And I don't think the city should be in that business. Cities make bad landlords, so disposing of this.
So I think selling the property would be a Measure C issue as well as a surplus lands issue.
Okay. So that gets, that doesn't sound easy at all. Okay. So I guess the numbers come up to, if you argue that you don't, we don't want to be in the mobile home park business, to get it back to, I mean, what would it look like if we just move everybody? We just pay, it'd be a fenced-off brownfield site effectively?
If we moved everybody.
Yeah, if we do the 10-year, relocate, close the park, move everybody off in, you know, 10 years, we would just have a brownfield site based on those estimates?
Yeah, I, brownfield to me, it kind of.
I'm sorry, but like, it would just be, not, but it'd be just a, a vacant lot.
Vacant property. I think if we don't demo some of the foundations and things like that, we might want to fence it off to ensure people don't get hurt, et cetera.
But it would be another $4 million to make it a passive park, which is, I'm assuming just grass and trees?
Correct.
Okay. And what's the action item you're asking for tonight or you're just briefing us for?
We're bringing this forward to hear the council's kind of thoughts about it. Our intent would be to come back with formal, at a council meeting with an agenda item where there would be action taken because we do need some action to help inform us how we're going to move forward. And particularly because if we're going to close it, we need to get this relocation consultant onboard by the end of the year. If we're not going to close it, I think having that decision here pretty soon would be helpful to the current tenants so that they can invest in their properties and kind of understand what their future looks like.
So we could do something like a five and five, right? Like a five-year lease with a five-year option so that in five years, we can kind of see how, we can check back in. Has the funds, park fund closure is gone if we choose option one, for instance?
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful if there are scenarios that the council wants us to look at, that we can come back with a chart, you know, on the night where you take some action, you know, understanding the pleasure of the council, if it is to extend and create some additional scenarios, that would be helpful in, in that decision. Council has the ability to decide however you want to break that up.
Okay. Well, I'm interested in us not being landowners anymore for residential, directly, right? Like, I think we have other projects that kind of keep us, we set the policy for it, great, let's build affordable housing, but the City Council has no direction on direct impact on rents or any of that type of thing, right? Because in theory, we kind of do in this place, correct?
Well, currently, correct. If we're going to extend these lease agreements, we're going to bring lease agreements to the City Council to approve.
Right. So I, I mean, personally, I just, I don't think that we should be in that business in the long term for anything. So I'd be interested in disposing of the park at some point, but not costing us any money. Like, there's no urgency to reclaim that land for anything. I mean, I know there was some Olympics discussion for it, but given folks enough time to figure out what they want to do, 10 years is, I think, a pretty decent amount of time. But I'd also like to, and give us some options, maybe in five years for a check-in, so like a five and five, or like a five, we do nothing, you get in five more type of thing. And then additional, like what it would take to turn it into what we would, a full, you know, full, full endgame red ribbon cutting, it's a great park at the end of it, what, what the time scenarios look like to make that happen. And if, and then I'm assuming all of these include cost, annual cost increases, all of, it's all, it's not just a flat multiplier, it's, these are, these are pretty legit numbers?
Yeah, there's incremental increases through inflation and CPI increases. And granted, those are going up higher and higher.
Sure, sure. And then decreases for like some, it may be six years, we have a big capital expense type of stuff that's kind of all built into this?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Ms. Carr?
Thank you. I feel like we need just so much more information on this to really come up with a thoughtful conclusion. But one of the things that I, I like, one of the elements as far as the acquisition and relocation consultant, was bullet point number two is to analyze the local market data for obviously the mobile homes. And I think that that would be something that I would like to see because, and I, what I also like is, I mean, it's $15,000. I don't know why we didn't go ahead and go forward with this so that we could have that data for this meeting. We should have done that at the beginning of this year, in my opinion, rather than waiting right now. And what I would also like to see is another option of allowing these folks that are currently living there to potentially buy the park themselves. And it would maybe fulfill what you're talking about, Dan, is you don't want the city in this, but give the residents the opportunity to purchase this. I think that that might be a solution. But it would maybe take this relocation consultant to find out, you know, what are the long-term plans for the residents that are living there? And to have those conversations to say, hey, if, if you did have the opportunity to buy this park, would you be interested in it? And what would that look like? And I know you mentioned we may have to go through some Measure C and I don't know if that really would be surplus because it's affordable housing at that point. take some action, you know, understanding the pleasure of the council, if it is to extend and create some additional scenarios, that would be helpful in, in that decision. Council has the ability to decide however you want to break that up.
Okay, well, I'm interested in us not being landowners anymore for residential, directly, right? Like, I think we have other projects that kind of keep us, we set the policy for it, great, let's build affordable housing, but the city council has no direction on direct impact on rents, or any of that type of thing, right? Because in theory, we kind of do in this place, correct?
Well, currently, correct, if we're going to extend these lease agreements, we're going to bring lease agreements to the city council to approve.
Right, so I, I mean, personally, I just, I don't think that we should be in that business in the long-term for anything, so I'd be interested in disposing of the park at some point, but not costing us any money, like, there's no urgency to reclaim that land for anything, I mean, I know there was some Olympics discussion for it, but given folks enough time to figure out what they want to do, 10 years is, I think, a pretty decent amount of time, but I'd also like to, and give us some options, maybe in five years for a check-in, so like a five and five, or like a five, we do nothing, you get in five more type of thing, and then additional, like what it would take to turn it into what we would, a full, you know, full, full endgame red ribbon cutting, it's a great park at the end of it, what, what the time scenarios look like to make that happen. And if, and then, I'm assuming all of these include costs, annual cost increases, all of, it's all, it's not just a flat multiplier, it's, these are, these are pretty legit numbers?
Yeah, there's incremental increases through inflation and CPI increases, and granted, those are going up higher and higher.
Sure, sure, and then decreases for like some, it may be six years, we have a big capital expense type of stuff, that's kind of all built into this?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Ms. Carr?
Thank you. I feel like we need just so much more information on this to really come up with a thoughtful conclusion, but one of the things that I, I like, one of the elements as far as the acquisition and relocation consultant, was bullet point number two, is to analyze the local market data for, obviously, the mobile homes. And I think that that would be something that I would like to see, because, and I, what I also like is, I mean, it's $15,000, I don't know why we didn't go ahead and go forward with this, so that we could have that data for this meeting. We should have done that at the beginning of this year, in my opinion, rather than waiting right now. And what I would also like to see is another option of allowing these folks that are currently living there to potentially buy the park themselves. And it would maybe fulfill what you're talking about, Dan, is you don't want the city in this, but give the residents the opportunity to purchase this. I think that that might be a solution, but it would maybe take this relocation consultant to find out, you know, what are the long-term plans for the residents that are living there, and to have those conversations to say, hey, if, if you did have the opportunity to buy this park, would you be interested in it, and what would that look like? And I know you mentioned, we may have to go through some Measure C, and I don't know if that really would be surplus, because it's affordable housing at that point. So just something to think about, I, I think that, you know, personally, I would like to see it remain a mobile home park. I think it does fill a niche that we need in this community, which is affordable housing, and if there's an opportunity for those residents to purchase it, I think that would be something. But based on this, I, I really don't feel like we have enough data to really make a decision about the future of the park. And another thing that I'm concerned about, if we do close the park, say, 10, 15, 20 years from now, what are the costs going to look like for that? I mean, we have an estimate here, but we all know that these fluctuate dramatically, and I'm not really sure if that's an accurate assessment. Again, not, this is all sort of pie in the sky, we don't really have anybody third-party giving us this data to really back it up. So my recommendation would be to pay the $15,000 and find out exactly what the intentions are of the residents, if they want to continue living there for the next 10 to 15 years, would they be open to buying the park, if that's an option? And then also, if we do continue to keep it open, if there is a way to take a portion of that revenue to, to be used for other facilities, so.
A couple of things I wanted just to mention is that the option for the residents to purchase the property would still be a Surplus Lands Act issue and a Measure C issue. Also, the property would need to be rezoned, a general plan amendment would need to be done, it's zoned park space, so for it to be permanent housing, there's a whole, you know, entitlement process that would need to, to happen. The, so that would all trigger this Measure C vote, as well as selling of the property under the Surplus Lands Act, it's a very specified process that you need to go through. It's affordable housing developers that you need to make the property available to, and mobile homes are not technically considered affordable housing under state law. They're attainable housing, they're affordable by design, but they're not covenanted, they don't have the restrictions recorded on them to make them available to like very low, low income, based on AMI, area median income. So that would be problematic from a couple of vantage points there. And I did just want to say that we did, we did, these numbers did come from consultation with a relocation consultant. So there was a consultant that this is all that they do, relocation plans, based on their experience with these, and so the numbers came from the conversations with the consultant. They're also the ones that told us the $15,000 cost to officially, you know, get their services. We would obviously go out and do an RFP to find somebody, our timeline does include procuring somebody and starting, so I think generally, we just kind of wanted to frame it as, I'm not sure that the council was aware of this relocation liability, because we were frankly, a little bit surprised by it as well, and it's expensive. And so, sure, those numbers are going to fluctuate a little bit, they are rough orders of magnitude, but I think it gives enough of a sense of how expensive it is, and so we were trying to present some options for the council to not have to incur that expense, and maybe find a way to extend the park so that it could be funded in the future, and there's some options there. Or conversely, the council can decide to, to let the leases expire and move forward with the relocation. So it was meant to be sort of a high-level discussion, conversation, and then we would come back to you with an item, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Thank you. Ms. Moser?
Thank you. I originally had a lot of the same thoughts that Councilmember Carr had, so I appreciate your response to all of that, it's a very complex and complicated issue, but with our, save our seniors groups as have been coming here, I think it was worth having that discussion about what our options are here, with regards to affordable housing specifically. We do have an affordable housing challenge here within our community, as do most. I do feel like I would not want to just lose that affordable housing in this moment, and also, we would have a pretty high cost to do that, and we didn't necessarily understand that. From this, I like to see the shorter term, possibly 10 to 15 years in my mind, I know Dan was, Councilmember Kelmick was talking about a five and five, that might be fine as well, maybe that could be brought back. It would give the council more flexibility, depending upon things that might change in the nearer term, but would also provide some assurance and stability to those park owners or the, that are there within the park. I do think that doing some pre-planning and providing some funding to go towards a park closure reserve fund does make sense. I do think that it also is interesting to consider where the revenue's going, I know it's going to the general fund right now, it is, as was noted earlier, I think it does make sense also to consider where we are moving our funds as far as the maintenance of our parks. I think that was definitely something that, that made sense for us to look at further. Yeah, I guess that's it, I, I really do, oh, there, one is, one other question, you talked about the improvements that would be necessary if we were to continue the park, and mentioned that the pavement would need to be improved, do we have any idea of what the CIP would be for that? No idea, okay. And so I guess that, to bring it back to us, I would like to know that cost, and also any other additional infrastructure or support costs that would be required of the city as well, as we move forward, maybe for the shorter and the longer term?
Thank you. Okay, and I think we have part of the answer this evening, with currently, you look at the gross revenue, 685, less our expenditures and the 5% vacancy rate, so you can kind of back into, so roughly, Kim, what is our, our annual expenditure?
Right, for the, for the maintenance of the park, so not CIP, so 100,000, just ongoing maintenance is what we currently pay, but there's not a lot there that the city is responsible for. And then there's this driveway situation that has some deferred maintenance, so that requires a one-time cost that we can bring back to you, what that would be.
As far as the, like, infrastructure, like, pipes and things like that, like, that's not, is that considered in that $100,000 number? Just because I know a lot of the infrastructure throughout the city is older, and so there are certain types of things that maybe wouldn't be included in that number?
I can address that, so Public Works maintains the irrigation system out in the park, along with the rest of Central Park, and so there is some maintenance there, but it's wrapped into the, to the whole Central Park maintenance budget.
Okay, and then that final number of the 4.6 million estimated cost to create a passive park, I know the other numbers were adjusted for inflation over time, would that number kind of stay the same over time? Because I know that one didn't have a.
That, that number would probably increase, that was not adjusted in that last table, because it wasn't included.
Yeah, thank you, if that could be included too over time, that'd be helpful, thank you.
Mr. Posey?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of questions I have are, where are we at with respect to the market as far as space rent? Because what I'm concerned about is that if our gross revenue is 685, and our expenses in vacancy is 571, we're netting, unless I'm reading this wrong, $114,000 a year for, for managing and maintaining and dedicating this asset, how, if we're netting 114, how can we ever get where we need to go, unless I'm reading this wrong? Can somebody clarify the, the expenditures? And if we bring this back for consideration, I would want an income, an income and expense review on this, along with a, a market rate survey on the space rents.
Okay, so you are reading the chart incorrectly, the second is our net revenue, so the top is our gross revenue, and the 571 is our, our net revenue, so it.
Oh, okay, all right.
So that number got factored into the, the charts that were later shown, and then we do do an annual survey, I think we mentioned this, the last council meeting, or, that we are required.
EDC, I think.
It was part of the TBRA report, that's right, that we do, in April of each year, we do, do a survey of the rents for mobile homes in the city, and, Kim, I don't have those numbers in front of me right now, do you recall? I roughly remember that market was about 1,700 per month.
Market rate, right, market rate's about 1,700, ours is 1,358 currently.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that answers my question, I guess, then also, part of the survey of the residents too, is, you know, where, where can we take the rents to? Not that we want to, you know, raise them as sky-high, but we certainly want to be within the market, and, you know, if this is, this is, this is really the only revenue-generating opportunity that we have for that piece of real estate, we're probably better off generating revenue for some time, rather than not generating revenue, and then creating a fenced-off area with foundations, and then waiting for the money to make it into a park. So I'm kind of, I'm okay with leaving it as a mobile home park, but also want to understand really the, the fiscal implications of doing so, we already know what it is for not doing so, so that's my, that's all I had to contribute today.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you, Mayor, so Ms. Luna Reno, so thanks for the explanation of what would be entailed if we explored whether the residents could buy the land themselves. I still think there's some value in looking into that option, so it sounds to me like there's a range of options, all the way from having the residents or someone buy that and use that land for affordable housing, whether it requires additional zoning, all of those things, I'm just curious to know, you know, what would be entailed, because it's not impossible, it's just that, it sounds like it would be complex, it might be time-consuming, so, you know, it'd be helpful to know what we would be looking at in terms of time as well. And then at the other end of the spectrum is just leaving it as is, which, you know, I'm not, you know, I don't see a compelling reason to require people to leave the mobile home park, you know, within the next 18 months or whatever is left on the lease. So I'm just curious about the entire range of options, so I look forward to seeing that, thanks.
I would also, I'd like to speak to that as well, but I think everybody's almost said everything I wanted to say, but I think it's a good idea to have all possibilities on the report, I'm definitely in favor of having a report, all possibilities on the report, because we are not in a good atmosphere at this point to, you know, be relocating homes and seniors and all that. I was inclined, like Mr. Peterson initially, I thought, you know, gosh, we have some income there, and then after Mrs. Engel was speaking about the cost in the parks, I mean, my goodness, it's a lot of money. I, I don't know, I'd like to ask, what would be the amount that we could possibly take from that? Is it from the 571? Let's say, would we be able to take 200,000 or something of that? Well, I want to hear her say it, because of the people listening.
Yes, we, there's, so 100% of that revenue, it's general fund revenue, so the city can decide however they, the city council, so you could take 100% of it, which is kind of what we have shown here, and for the 10-year option, 100% of that is sort of being earmarked for this park closure reserve fund. Similarly, in years 15 through 25, you could take 100% of the revenue as well, you could portion some of that for annual maintenance of Central Park, you could do a portion of it for relocation, a portion of it for park improvement, a number of options.
Okay, and the number of things that have changed too, since even since we've been serving on council, I mean, the Surplus Land Act, that wasn't around, now this is another thing that we have to deal with, right? And then lastly, I know a couple of us are leaving here, but in speaking with City Manager, I forget, sorry, we've talked about going forward in the next couple of years, doing in-depth cost of what it's going to be to really deal with our infrastructure, I don't mean just here, and I don't mean just in a park, I mean the whole city, and it may be smart for us to, at this point, do what, who was the one about five, five and five, was that you, Mr. Kelmick? You know, at least give the residents, okay, you can stay here another five years, and if we have to do something, then you begin over five years. I, I just think there's a lot in the air right now for this city to make a decision about its infrastructure going forward, and this little bit of money would be kind of nice to have if, you know, it could be used for maybe sprucing up the park, and then also the park across the street. So that's my two cents for right now, I think Mr. Kelmick wanted to speak again?
So, thank you so much, so Councilmember Carr brought up the point of having the residents purchase the park, potentially. I remember into, deep into the weeds on this, years and years ago, was subdivision of parks, that was something that was used to potentially help with ownership, individual pieces of that, so if we were going to do a little bit of research on what it would take for the Measure C cost, let's assume in a November election, consolidated in a, in a larger election, what the lands act piece, all the rezoning would cost, if it's, I don't know if, if there's a caveat for it's zoned park, and we're going to put it up for state lands, it's, you know, developers would have to go through the Measure C vote, and they may just all pass on it, and we jump through that hoop, but, but yeah, I think subdivision is a piece of that, maybe, an interesting caveat to do that, and I, I'm assuming if they purchase it, we'd obviously want to maybe help in that process, so if there's a mechanism, I don't know if it's GSML, or if there's some fund, if you guys could, in the narrative of that staff report, discuss what, how folks buy their own parks in, in California, because I know in Idaho, it's.
I can tell you right now, it's not easy, and that's, I think that's the challenge you guys are going to have. We're asking you to bring back a lot, and we want to, because we want to do this right, and know what's available, not only for the city, but for our residents, you know, if it makes sense to buy, there is one that Jamboree did in Irvine.
Yeah, and it may be that we siphon off some of this, and that helps pay the interest on the, on whatever, and over 10 years, and then we figure it out, so get creative with that piece, but I just want to throw out the subdivision piece, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelmick, Ms. Moser? Oh, all done, okay. So, is, do you need a motion from us, or no, just?
No, yes, thank you, this was very helpful, we appreciate your comments.
Is there anybody else that wanted to comment? Okay. Thank you for the detailed report, I really appreciated it, what it really does is stimulate a lot more questions, as you can tell, so thank you for taking this on. Okay, I guess at this point, we will adjourn, recess the meeting to closed session, and pursuant to.
Oh, he's so moved.
Oh, thank you. Do I have a second? Okay. Pursuant to the government code 54957.6, city council takes this opportunity to publicly introduce and identify labor negotiators, Al Zalinka, city manager, also in attendance, Britt Lee Mello, Director of Administration Services, regarding the following Huntington Beach Municipal Teamsters, Management Employees Organization, MEO, Police Officers Association, POA, Police Management Association, PMA, Huntington Beach Firefighters Association, HBFA, Fire Management Association, FMA, and then Marine Safety Management Association, MSMA, City Lifeguard Employees Association, SCLEA, and then Non-Representative, Non-Associated Employees, NA.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we add to that, that public sector consultants will also be in?
Public.
Public sector.
Public sector will also be attending closed session.
Thank you.
So we will recess, and I already got a motion, I guess, so.